Thank you very much for coming on a Saturday morning for bringing in the new year of 2015. As our theme for this morning is the City of Inglewood on the rise. The City of Inglewood programs, events, and news. As a community, I acknowledge the outstanding efforts of the Martin Luther King Committee, the participants, vendors, and supporters of our 32nd annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day Celebration held on Monday, January 19th, commemorating this special day under the theme "Advancing the Dream: The Time Is Now." The day was filled with moving commemorative program, rousing speeches, a symbolic march, and concluded with a free King Festival that included vendors, games, and live entertainment. Overall, it was an outstanding event, enjoyed by all in attendance. For those that have access to Time Warner Inglewood Cable Channel 35, you will be able to view this meeting along with prior District 4 Town Hall meetings via YouTube link on the City of Inglewood's website, which is www.citininglewood.org. For those of you who do not have access or do not have access to or use a computer, a master DVD of each Town Hall meeting is provided to the District 4 ICOP Center and is available free checkout for you to view with your family or your block club. The District 4 ICOP Center is located at 2666 West Imperial Highway in the Crenshaw Imperial Shopping Center. Mr. Aaron Elsie, Aaron, we acknowledge, Mr. Aaron Elsie is our ICOP Center liaison and can be reached by calling (310) 330-5346, or you may stop by Monday through Thursday from 11 until 4 p.m. Our job opportunities email listing has been in place for almost four years, and we have experienced tremendous success. Thank you for the many individuals, organizations, and churches who are taking the time to pass this information along with family members, neighbors, customers, and members. Those who have an interest to be added to our job list can provide your name and email on the sign-in sheet by contacting my council assistant, Ms. Claudette Matthews, or you can call our district office at (310) 412-8605. Hollywood Park Site Development Status. At this time, the Hollywood Park Land Company has confirmed that the developer has demolished all horse stables, caretaker buildings, infield buildings, and is pulling the utilities in and around the lake, and demolition of the grandstand is scheduled in late February. Our current activities on the site include the abatement of environmental regulated materials, the mature trees that are in good health and could be saved have been boxed and are being stored in the nursery area on the site. Off-site sewers beneath Arbivida Street and Osage Street have been installed. New fire hydrants have been installed on Prairie Avenue with the remaining hydrants to be installed shortly. Work underway on the 90-inch diameter storm drain and sewer, city sewer, at Dodie Avenue and Century Boulevard and is scheduled to be completed in the next 30 days. Work is beginning on installation of a new water main and the fire hydrants on Century Boulevard. Madison Square Garden. Madison Square Garden has confirmed their plans to utilize the lots leased from the City of Inglewood along Century Boulevard from Yukon Avenue to Prairie Avenue and on 102nd Street from Dodie Avenue to Freeman. Madison Square Gardens is working with the planning staff to comply with the applicable regulations and prepare the lots for patron use. Public Works Projects. The Southern California Gas Company has completed the pipeline replacement project along Crenshaw Boulevard from the City of Los Angeles borders to the 105 freeway as detailed in their pipeline safety enhancement plan. At this time, potholing and survey operations will continue along Crenshaw Boulevard in preparation for future tie-ins and pipeline testing, which will begin in late spring 2015. Tie-in work is expected to last one to two months and continue until the early spring, summer of 2015. The LA County Public Works Department, the lead agency, the California Department of Transportation known as Caltrans, and the City of Inglewood are moving forward on the Van Ness Avenue Street Improvement Project. As construction schedules are subject to change, the latest information that we have is the project is currently on schedule, and the project is expected to be awarded late spring 2015 with an anticipation construction start in late summer 2015. The Imperial Highway Improvement Project is still anticipated for our budgeted year of 2015-16 and is continued upon the LA County Public Works fiscal year, which goes from June of one year through July 1st of the following, or should say July 1st to June 30th. The summer of 2015 will begin construction of the Century Boulevard Rehabilitation Project. Areas of note include the section of the road on Van Ness Avenue on the east to Fifth Avenue on the west that will include three lanes on the north side of the street and two lanes on the south side of the street. Also, there will be an addition of a dedicated right turn lane on eastbound on Century Boulevard, turning right going southbound on Crenshaw Boulevard. Graffiti Abatement. A number of locations across the district were tagged with graffiti over the Christmas New Year holiday, and the timely removal of graffiti can be attributed to our graffiti abatement crew. Our quality of life and the image of our community are negatively impacted when graffiti is not removed in a timely manner. Graffiti abatement endeavors to remove graffiti within 24 to 48 hours is our goal. To report a tagged location, please call the graffiti abatement hotline at (310) 412-8739. And this is primarily for the audience that's listening to this broadcast because if you've got your handouts, you'll know I provided you with a number of hotline numbers, and this is one of those numbers as well. For the Planning. The new warehouse shoe site located on the southeast corner of Crenshaw Boulevard and Century Boulevard has been developed in accordance with the Inglewood Municipal Code. Legal and proper notification has gone out to the community, and the Planning Commission held a planning hearing for the approval of its development and completion. This new location is scheduled to open in February 2015. Code Enforcement. Code Enforcement has been diligently working on addressing several issues in the district. Among them are illegal street vendors, illegal garage conversions, and suspected squatter activity at the abandoned gas station on the corner of Imperial Highway and Yukon Avenue. If you see or suspect illegal activity, please note the activity and location and contact the Code Enforcement Department by calling (310) 412-5590. Parking Enforcement. City Parking Services staff oversees all parking-related services in the city, including parking enforcement, traffic control, parking meter operations, parking permits, abandoned vehicles, parking signage, personal complaints, along with other related parking matters. Please note that our new and fully-staffed Parking Service Division is very diligent regarding infractions of either the City Inglewood Municipal Code or State of California Vehicle Parking Code. Actions such as parking in a driveway where a portion of your vehicle blocks the sidewalk, parking next to the curb where the passenger side is facing the street, failure to display a parking permit in a permit-required area, and/or parking your vehicle in a red zone or other posted no parking area during any portion of the hours is prohibited and will be, and you will now be getting issued parking citations. In the past, residents were allowed to get away with these parking infractions due to our limited city staff. These infractions are against the law, and our new contract service now has the manpower to enforce the law. Any questions or requests for parking services can be submitted to Ms. Tanya Perry, the Parking Services Superintendent, by calling the Parking Services Customer Service Line of (310) 412-8731. Again, it's in your, you'll find that one in your city government telephone directory which I provided you. The Inglewood Police Department Public Work Safety and Quality of Life Issues. The Inglewood Police Department currently investigated a series of home burglaries that have occurred within the city, including District 4, in the areas of Century Heights and Inglewood Knowles. While the investigation is ongoing, extra patrols have been assigned to these areas in an effort to reduce, discourage future crimes. In an effort to protect our families and possessions, residents are strongly encouraged to share information with your neighbors regarding any suspicious activity, including the presence of unknown persons and/or vehicles hanging out in the neighborhood that do not belong there. If you do not already have one established, starting or re-establishing a block club is an excellent way of keeping neighbors informed and diligent regarding activity in your neighborhood. For more information on starting or re-establishing a block club, please contact Mr. Aaron Elsie at the District 4 ICOP Center. Again, the number is (310) 330-5346. Since the fall of 2014 and the beginning of early January 2015, Inglewood Police Department has been in high alert for car clubbers entering the City of Inglewood. Inglewood Police Department officers have been monitoring Crenshaw Boulevard, Imperial Highway, and the village at Century Shopping Center, and no activity currently has been reported. We have had a number of them that have been, and thanks to our police department, we've been able to divert that traffic to go somewhere else. Inglewood Police Department Community Affairs. People assisting the homeless, such as PATH and St. Margaret's Center, Catholic Charities have been very successful in their efforts to address and resolve the issues related to homeless and homeless encampments in our community. Several persons have been removed off the streets and into the appropriate housing or have been united with their families. Homeless encampments impact the image and quality of life in our community, and the Inglewood Police Department's Community Affairs has addressed this challenging issue with kindness and compassion. We're aware of two women who have set up an encampment on the east side of the current building where the warehouse shoe store is located at Crenshaw Boulevard near the bus stop. Outreach has already been, has been made in an effort to see what we can do to assist these ladies and move them into a suitable housing. The DUI and CDL checkpoint. On Friday, January 9th, at 8:00 p.m., the Inglewood Police Department's Traffic Unit conducted a DUI/CDL checkpoint on the southbound Los Angeles Boulevard in Hillcrest. A total of 585 vehicles passed through the checkpoint and were screened, resulted in two DUIs, that's driving under influence, seven vehicles impounded, and 10 citations issued. The Inglewood Police Department Appreciation. The following is a summary of a letter submitted by a District 4 resident to the Inglewood Police Department expressing her appreciation for quick actions following attempted burglary of the resident's home, and I'll read excerpts from her letter. "To the Inglewood Police Department, this is dated January 2015. I'm writing this letter in regards to a break-in that occurred at the home, at my home, on December 21, 2014. Thanks to the quick actions of my neighbor, an unbelievable response by the Inglewood Police Department, and the assistance of other law enforcement agencies, two of the three thieves were apprehended. A helicopter was brought in and a canine unit was sent into my home before I entered. I thank God I wasn't hurt, that no one else was hurt, and that nothing was taken from my home, I only had a broken window. I'm amazed at the responsiveness and professionalism of these officers and their actions and shed a positive light on the Inglewood Police Department." So, we want to thank the police department. Let's give all our departments a hand, please, for the city. And now, onto our speakers. It is with great honor that I have the pleasure of introducing our mayor, who has been one of those that believes and think it outside the box, believes in engaging every council member with the visionary efforts to move this city forward, that leaves no stone unturned about where there's a will, there's a way, and he and the council as a whole is making this happen. Please help me welcome the man of the hour for the city on the rise, our distinguished mayor, James T. Butts Jr.
Good morning, everybody. How many of you ever saw Def Comedy Jam, Russell Simmons' program? Anybody see that? Well, after Councilman Franklin's speech, I feel like Russell Simmons saying thank you and good night.[876.32][876.32](Laughter) Because there, there's no more oxygen left in the topic.[881.00][881.00](Laughter) But I'm gonna do the best I can. First, I want to thank all of you that voted in the last mayor's election. I won with 83% of the vote, but Councilman Franklin did me even better. Nobody even dared run against him.[896.23][896.23](Laughter) But, but... But here's the problem. He has to get at least one vote, so somebody has to volunteer to go vote, so he wins, all right? Do we have a volunteer?[912.93][912.93](Laughter) All right, all right. You know, we have, we've come a very long ways in a very short period of time, and I want to ask you a question. How many people in this room live in Inglewood say today that they're proud to say they live in Inglewood? All right. When we started this journey four years ago, we had an $18.6 million structural deficit. I took office February 1st of 2011. By the second payroll in June, we were scheduled to be cash flow bankrupt. We had been subsidizing our water purchases out of the water account from the money that was set aside for infrastructure repairs to repair water mains and pipes and sewers because the council had not raised water rates to keep up with rising water costs since 2003, and in that time, water prices tripled. We were bleeding about $50,000...
What's wrong?
Can you guys hear me?[989.43][989.43](Laughter) All right, all right. I thought you just liked me, I'm sorry.[995.23][995.23](Laughter) All right. We were, on average, we were spending $50,000 a day more than we were taking in in revenues. We had a lifetime medical program that guaranteed every employee and a dependent medical coverage for life with no cap on escalation of cost. That program alone, even if we hadn't solved the cash flow problem, by 2017 would again been an opportunity for us to go bankrupt. All these things that we had to do as a council were counterintuitive to staying in office because there are a lot of constituencies that get mad if you raise water rates, if you, we, we cut 140 positions from the budget, we had everybody left going to 10% pay cut furlough. Those were tough times, but those were things that had to be done because a city that does not manage its finances properly will never get economic development, and people will leave, and things will continue to get worse until you're Stockton, San Bernardino, Vallejo, Detroit. If you don't deal with your unfunded liabilities, you'll go out of business as a city, and someone else will be making the decisions for you. And so, I was very grateful two years ago when we had a reconstituted council and everybody got on the same page. Since then, we took $11 million that we had in the bank, which was insufficient to even pay our liabilities to our employees for accumulated sick and vacation leaves, and we've tripled that to about $33 million. We've been, I like that. We have quintupled the amount of street resourcing in one year that we had done in the prior three years. We had a goal to start renewing our water infrastructure at 1.5 miles of piping a year, and we did three miles last year. Our residential sound installation program, we had lost authorization because of problems with our grant reporting, and we lost about $36 million in grant funding. Well, since I've gotten my hands around that, I used to work for Law Watch, we have received over $100 million in RSI funding in the last two years alone.[1145.08][1145.08](Applause) The week before last, we received a $44 million authorization from Law Watch, the largest authorization that they have ever given a city. Right now, we are the nation leader in RSI construction. We've done over 2,000 homes in the last 24 months. To put that in perspective, since the program started in 1999 for insulating homes, we've done 5,300. 2,000 of those were in the last two years. Betty Griffiths is here from RSI, and I want to give her a big hand. The shop-off group purchased the old Daniel Freeman site. They're gonna put a gated community of $500,000 and up townhome condominiums there. The forum deal that a lot of people opposed turned out to be just what we felt it would be. It was an anchor and a game changer for the city. It opened January 15th of 2014. In less than one year, less than one year, the forum became the number-one concert venue in the greater Los Angeles area. Doubled the number of concerts that were held at Staples Center. There's a gas station at La Cienega and Fairview that has lain fallow for about 18 years now and owned by Thrifty, and we've entered into a public-private partnership with them for them to build us a $500,000 community center in exchange for them being able to have digital advertisement along La Cienega Boulevard, of which the city will receive 40% of the proceeds. We have, we have done a number of these things, and it would take much too long because the main thing we want to talk about is revitalization project, but I want to hit some of the highlights so you understand that all these things that are happening now don't occur in a vacuum. They occur because there's a good leadership business model in our city, and we're making business-like decisions. Crime. Our police department is, the smallest has been since I've been here. We had 216, we're down to like 199. We just had six come out of the academy, so we're up to 205. But the chief's done an excellent job, the police have done an excellent job between 2011, 2012, 2013. Those three consecutive years are the three lowest consecutive years on crime in the history of keeping crime stats in the City of Inglewood, and that's worth a big hand for the police department. We have an RFP that we're gonna be narrowing down to a final bidder for Market Street to do something where between $100 and $150 million development that is to capitalize on the MetroLink station that's going to park itself at La Brea and Florence. Our intent is for that old Buffett and Cadillac site to be either condominiums or a hotel, a boutique hotel with an archway that invites you to come to Market Street, which we hope will be residential, second floor, entertainment, and retail on the first floor with a renovation of the Fox Theater to be a digital multiplex, but to maintain the historic facade. LA Curb, which is an internet site, and it's a national internet site, and they rate communities in various parts of the country based upon their social and economic potential demonstrated in a particular year. For 2014, Inglewood was named LA's Best Neighborhood. And the thing that, that we can't take responsibility for, that you're responsible for, is community pride. And we are seeing, I'm seeing, councilmen's seeing a lot of manifestations of community pride. One of the things that I just left, this t-shirt says Inglewood on it. We had a cleanup date this morning for Inglewood High School where we wanted volunteers to come in and paint and repair Inglewood High School. We had 200 high school students show up and 50 parents show up. Two years ago, that never would have happened.[1424.01][1424.01](Applause) You see, this is your city, and, and I understand in the bad times, it's easier to stay home and curse the council when everything's all messed up, and then, well, you should. But now, with this initiative, you have an opportunity to put your signature on things and say, "I'm was part of the biggest thing to ever happen in the City of Inglewood." And so, I'm gonna talk briefly about it because Chris Meaney and Gerard McCollum are gonna do an excellent job of explaining the project to you, but I want to make sure you understand my feelings on what kind of deal this is for you, for our city. Most developments where football stadiums involve, most, if not all, there's always the municipalities at risk because they expect the participation to be upfront. They want, for the, for the privilege of having, you know, football in your town, they want you to let bonds to defray costs of construction, both public and private. And, and the discussions I've had with Chris Meaney over the years have always indicated that our community is not, that our community is not gonna bond itself, that, that we want to work deals that work for both of us that involve little to no risk to the city. And you know, the, an initiative's been floated, and it just has some brilliant concepts in it, and here's how it works. The entire development, including the entertainment zone, sports entertainment district, which will include an 80,000-seat stadium and a 6,000-seat performing arts theater, will be 100% financed by private money, and that includes any public improvements. These days, cities don't get parks. This development has 25.3 acres of parks, four in total, a lake. Then, whenever there's a major development, the city is responsible for public roads, sidewalks, street lights, you know, the things that make a city. Now, what ordinarily happens, say you put, you build a housing development, and a builder says, "We want to build 150 homes." Well, the city has to build the roads that get to, that go through it, the water infrastructure, street lights, sidewalks. Well, the developer doesn't put that money up front. The city either pays for it out of the general fund or floats infrastructure bonds, but it has to be paid for. And the same thing with a major development like this. But in this case, the developer puts all the money up front, public and private. Now, only children believe in the Easter Bunny or Santa Claus, so there's never any something for nothing, but this is gonna be the best something for a little bit that you ever heard of. And so, here's the way our deal works. Only in a year where the city takes in $25 million in direct revenues from the project, you know, car taxes, parking taxes, property taxes, only after we've made $25 million for the general fund will we take the overage and start to pay back what was invested for our public infrastructure. So, real simple, say we derive $30 million in one year. The first $25 million goes to us, and they get a tax credit for the other $5 million. Never, ever will the city treasury write a check to anybody for this development. If we go years and years and say the stadium goes out of business and we still owe money, well, that year, we wouldn't have made $25 million, so we pay nothing. If we make $24,999,000, we pay nothing back towards our pre-front, for our front-end costs. Never in the history of stadium deals has a city ever had the chance to have a deal like this, and $25 million, for those of you don't know, represents about 30% of our general fund. It'll give us the capacity to hire 50, 50 police officers, to reopen Fire Station 2, to pave even more streets, and we're really knocking those streets out, but it changes the whole dynamic because cities that live off their indigenous property taxes, indigenous sale taxes, meaning, you know, paid for by the people that live here, they get by in the best of times, they struggle during recessions, and we, we've already experienced that. Cities that have cars and people from other places that spend money there, they have other people pay for their services. And, and one thing that's common about all those cities, Santa Monica, Culver City, they complain about the traffic.[1748.15][1748.15](Laughter) But you know what? They wouldn't have it any other way. So, I'm gonna come to a close, but I, I just want to let you know that this has been a really, although it's been painful, it's been a very quick journey, relativity to what we've accomplished in this short period of time. And I know everywhere I go in Sacramento, all they talk about is Inglewood. How did you guys do it?[1786.15][1786.15](Laughter) All of a sudden, we're the prettiest girl at the prom.[1794.88][1794.88](Laughter) All of a sudden, we're the prettiest girl at the prom. So, I want to thank you for your support and, you know, let's keep going on this ride together, all right? Thank you.
We will take a couple of questions, but we do have a lot of speakers going to come. Way in the back, speak loud.
You mentioned, uh, community pride, and we're prideful. Look around this room. This is what Inglewood looks like, okay? Just want you to remember that. We are Inglewood. My concern with all of this development, all these new buildings and the potential, well, the expectation of more police patrols once the buildings are in place, I'd just like the city to remember that this is Inglewood and we shouldn't be patrolled out of the area. So let's be mindful as we move forward that this is for our benefit and people, let's stay here and benefit from it.
All right, thank you. One more comment. Lady in the back. Can you get the mic to the lady in the back, please? Hello? Yes, she's coming.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I, I was just at the Inglewood, uh, High School. I saw Mayor Butts there and I live down the street on Gravilla. And I wanted to know, what are we going to do about those abandoned buildings, the AT&amp;T building, uh, right over there on, uh, La Brea? And then there's the, where the 100 Black Men Club that used to be there, that's abandoned. Are they going to do anything or develop anything in those areas to beautify the neighborhood?
Absolutely. You know, and I told you, I said I could stay up here all day to talk about the things that are going to happen. We have an exclusive negotiations agreement for that 100 Black Men Building that's going to be, um, housing. We're trying to make it market-rate housing. It'll be somewhere between 18 and 40 units and that's already in progress.
Okay, we need to go. Let's give the mayor a hand.
Okay, I see quite a few people standing. I'm, I'm asking to bring in more chairs on this side, although you may not be able to see the screen, which you may have to move, but to get you to be able to rest, we're going to bring some more chairs on this side. There's a couple of chairs here. Is there a chair right there that's available? There's a seat over here as well, if you want to, if you really want to come right now to sit down. Because now we're going to have possibly the main reason why you came here, or at least have strong interest to be here, and it has to do with the Hollywood Park Joint Venture Project. We are proud to say that we've had a number of local community meetings, block clubs, as well as associations that identify that they want, in fact, be educated about what's going on with this project. I thought it was critical, as you heard me reach, giving you my talking points earlier today, those were the talking points I developed over the many conversations I've had with residents via email or direct contact of expressed concerns. I made sure I reduced that into writing, so that way I covered all the points. At this time, we're now going to talk about the future development. I want to reach out to Gerard McCollum II, who's the project manager, and he'll bring on his team to give you more details. Again, I gave everyone a pen, I gave everyone the paper you can write on the back of, and this is also being televised. And again, it'll be at the I-Cop Center if you want a copy of this DVD. Please, at this time, help me welcome from Hollywood Park Land Company, the project manager, Gerard McCollum II.
Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you for coming out. As, as Councilman Franklin said earlier, we've done a number of these, actually, right as we started on January 8th, we have been everywhere. We've been to block clubs, we've been to HOA meetings, we've had our own meetings. And so today, we're here at our second town hall meeting, and we're going to do another town hall meeting next week for Councilman Morales. And so if you have a HOA or a block club that you want us to come speak to, meet us outside the table afterwards and we'll schedule an appointment for us to come out and, and basically go through this presentation and answer any questions you're going to have. Today, I'm actually honored to not have to do the presentation. Normally, you see me always speaking up here for the last eight years about the project, but, uh, the, actually, the owner of the company, my boss, Chris Meany's actually here, and I thought it would be actually good for you to hear directly from here. Before I bring Chris up, I would just want to introduce you to a couple of other people that associated with our team. Dr. D'Artagnan Scorsese in the very back there, which many of you might know. So as many of you know, D'Artagnan runs the Social Justice Learning Institute, so a lot of the fruit trees and healthy eating tips and programs geared towards primarily black male youth, trying to get them into college, have been run by Dr. Scorsese. So he's your community member, that's actually part of our team here and has been out equally talking about the virtues of this program. I'd like to also introduce Michelle Smith Ballard. Michelle, can you stand up for a minute? So Michelle is with Turner Construction. So as many of you might have noticed when you drop, drove onto the lot today, there's a lot of activity going on right here. And we've been going on actually since, uh, June of last year, and Michelle's team leads that effort. And so we've been doing job seminars and getting contractors on-site, local contractors, and so we have a very robust program. I think we're over 43% local minority business hiring and so forth and so on, so we're beyond our goal. A lot of that has to do with Michelle. One of the advantages that we have with, with Michelle is actually, Michelle is a homeowner in the Renaissance. Yes, Crenshaw. So we have a lot of local people actually a part of the project, so they have a little bit more of a vested interest than just coming to a job. Andy Camacho and Maria Camacho are always here, also here. And Melvin Roberts is actually in the back. He's actually the proponent on the initiative, so, thank you. He's responsible for us actually getting before you today. So without further ado, here's Mr. Chris Meany.
Thanks, Gerard. Good morning and, and thanks for having us today. I, I was, I was thinking about this and, and we are so, we're here today to talk about this initiative, which has been sponsored by Melvin, which is being advocated by D'Artagnan. And yet, I don't think it makes sense to talk about this initiative if we don't look back in time and put it in the context of the process that's been ongoing around Hollywood Park now for a considerable amount of time. In fact, we came to Inglewood in 2005 and, and Councilman Franklin met with us in 2005 and began the process of bringing us out to these meetings and, and, and he and, and his associates, making sure that the project that, that emerged for the redoing of Hollywood Park was actually addressing the needs of this community. And, and I do want to pause and say, while there is a project that is ongoing today and is being proposed to change today, this process since 2005 has involved extensive community engagements and workshops and community meetings. It has, it was crafted to really deal with the reality that for so many decades, the land that we are sitting on, that we're standing in, this land was an economic engine for Inglewood. This land had a thoroughbred racetrack back when racing mattered. It had, to our north, the Lakers and Kings playing, generating huge revenues. When these businesses declined and went away, Inglewood suffered great losses in its general fund and has been cutting back services and, and this land is lying fallow. And so, yes, we want to have a, 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 a community that remains Inglewood proud, but we also want to restore the economic engine that was once here and deserves to be here again. So, the, this is the land that we're talking about. If you go one more slide, let me pause right, right here for a second. So, in 2005, we began, we began a process. We came in, the Hollywood Park Land Company, which is a, an entity owned by this, by Stockbridge Capital Group. Stockbridge began the planning for that 238 acres. And together, we developed a plan that was ultimately approved by the city council in 2009 to build just under 3,000 new homes, a network of streets and open spaces, parks, a brand-new retail main street that was intended to be a regional hub, explicitly intended to stop Inglewood dollars from going out of the community for retail sales and restaurants and getting others to come in and spend their money here, with a hotel and a bit of, of office. That project was, it went through extensive reviews. All of its environmental impacts were analyzed, including the impacts of what would happen in land developed around it. And a year ago, we began construction on that infrastructure. And today, as you see outside, dollars are being spent, jobs are being generated and work is ongoing. And then something happened. In the area, Gerard, if you click forward, in the area that lied between our 238 acres and the forum, that 60 acres of land was purchased by the Cronky Group. Andy and Maria are, are close associates of the, of the Cronky Group and we're so happy to have them here with us today. The Cronky Group came to Inglewood because they recognized that Inglewood was on the rise. This is a private real estate group that has over 60 million square feet of commercial space in America. It is a very large institutional quality owner-operator. And they became our neighbor and we, Hollywood Park Land Company, Stockbridge Capital Group, began working with the Cronky Group to see if we couldn't harmonize the uses on these two sites. Now, we ultimately have formed a joint venture with the Cronky Group. The Cronky Group bought into the Hollywood Park Land Company and, and they have proposed, and we are, are now trying to execute, the joining and harmonizing of those two sites. Now, by the way, let's just, let's just sort of admit the elephant in the room. If all the Cronky Group was, was a commercial developer and we had made a joint venture with them and we were just going to have a better capitalized project and it'd be a little bigger, we wouldn't quite have this turnout. The Cronky Group happens to have another kind of feature about its holdings. It happens to be the nation's preeminent developer of sports and entertainment venues. And yes, it is true that the Cronky Group happens to own a number of important sports franchises across the, across the country. And so where they go, the media follows. But that doesn't change what we're about here. What we are about here is actually actualizing the vision that was born over years and years of local work. Only, we're going to have it expand and include that 60 acres with your permission, and we're going to add to that vision of a new heart for Inglewood, a sports and entertainment zone, and I want to tell you how that looks. So, the plan, as I told you before, the Hollywood Park Plan, that was already approved, the specific plan, 3,000 homes, a little under 700,000 square feet of retail, hotel, office. We are now proposing to change and expand so that it incorporates and spreads on to that 60 acres between us and the forum. We want to add to the retail and entertainment district that was already in the plan, a new sports stadium with 80,000 seats. Let me be very clear here. This stadium is designed to be the best in the country. It is designed to be the most beautiful stadium that it can be created, and it is certainly appropriate for Super Bowls. It is designed so that two NFL teams could operate there. It's also designed so that soccer could take place there, Final Four basketball games could take place there, the Olympics could stage events there. But, we're about creating the venue. We do not control whether an NFL team comes back to the Los Angeles area. That's a decision for the NFL, and we respect the NFL, and we are not in any way, in any way trying to step into their decision-making process. What we do hope, what we do hope is that the NFL will eventually decide to return a team to Los Angeles. And by the way, we propose that Inglewood have the only home that they would want to consider when they make that decision. We're also including, we're also including a 6,000-seat performing arts venue. As the mayor said, Madison Square Gardens has been a wonderful new member of our community here. They have a venue that can seat up to 18,000 seats, and it can swing all the way down to less, to seating less than half of that. But think about places like LA Live, which has multiple different venues that, at different sizes, can attract people. And so you think about, if I'm going to go see, you know, something play, if it's a big band, I can see it in one venue, if it's a small band, in another. And so the whole district becomes an entertainment zone. Well, we're in competition with downtown LA, Inglewood is. We propose to be, we propose to be super competitive with them. And so it is not okay to have one venue, we need more. And so this venue would be able to operate from 3,000 to 6,000 seats, so that it is, we intend it to be additive and helpful to Madison Square Gardens Forum. We are not in any way looking to compete with Madison Square Gardens Forum. The rest of the plan is that we've taken the, the residential that was of just under 3,000 units down to a proposed 2,500 units. We've done that to make the room to take the retail up a little bit. It was about 700,000 square feet of commercial that now goes to 890. And also, the other, only other change we've made is to increase the office space to 780,000 square feet. And we're increasing the office space, not necessarily because of just what we're doing with the new sports and entertainment zone, but because there has been a change in this area. We have not had Class A office space here, bringing professional jobs, but you know, you can feel it around you. You know, Tesla's in the neighborhood. You know, we have technology jobs over in Hawthorne. And it is our proposition that if we build new Class A office space in Inglewood, particularly if this becomes a regional hub, those professional firms will choose to be here and we want to be able to accommodate them. So, a big part of our, our project is the continuation of what has been our commitment to local jobs. So we fund job fairs, we have outreach programs, as you heard with, with Michelle, we have obligations for minority business and disadvantaged business enterprise participation in all of our jobs. And all of those commitments that were in the first project, they extend into our commitments to the second project. But we've added one thing. We've added one thing. We've said, with respect to the stadium itself, its permanent jobs, 35% of those need to be, have preference for Inglewood residents. By the way, these are not all full-time jobs. But let me tell you this, that stadium, between full and part-time jobs, will have 5,000 jobs. 5,000 full and part-time jobs. In addition to that, we think it's very important that we continue to, to, in every way, connect with the community. So we'll be funding a million dollars towards after-school programs so that we can find good ways to have this project link in with the, with the community. I'm not, the mayor did a better job than I. This will be a new economic engine for Inglewood and, and, and I, and I just don't think you can imagine what a difference a project like this can make. what a difference a project like this can make. This city's general fund, every year you're trying to work with a budget of $85 million. If you get a fresh, new $25 million that does not come out of any one of yours pockets, and that general fund grows by 35%, that is transformative to this community, and that's as it should be. By the way, in fairness, some of that money will be sales tax, and so we hope that's coming from you, because we hope you are coming here and spending lots and lots of money. So the mayor summarized in his comments our economic deal. I'm going to take another moment here and sort of make the exact same points again. And I do it because there's been a lot of reporting in the last two weeks on this project, and places like Orange County are reporting on this as somehow this is a bad deal. By the way, I haven't seen a single report like that by an Inglewood newspaper, but, but we are in an environment in which people are trying to throw mud on the walls if there are other cities that don't want the development to happen here in Inglewood. But I think this is very easy to understand, and I think you should understand it. What we have said is, on this site and this site only, this 298 acres, we're going to measure direct revenues to the city of Inglewood. Oh, by the way, we're going to exclude one thing. We're going to exclude any of the revenues that the city gets from the casino, because they already get it. We're not, we're not, what I'm about to say, that doesn't, the city still gets that. It's on top of what we're talking about. We own the land, we don't need a single contribution to the land. We will front all of the money to build every stitch of infrastructure, public and private, to build the public parks, to build every single stick of new buildings that will come on this site, the stadium, the performance venue, everything. Okay? When we build it, you know that 25 acres of new parks that are supposed to be maintained by the Parks Department? Well, we'll maintain them. They're public. Well, y'all will be down there using them. We're going to front that, we're going to, we're going to cover that money. All, and by the way, game day events, if there's new, you know, firemen, policemen, all that, any of those additional costs to the city, we front all those. Our only request is this. When the city is measuring on an audited basis, the new, the dollars that are generated from this site excluding the casino, this new revenue, when that new revenue in a given year exceeds $25 million, you'll reimburse us with the extra dollars, allow us to get back, with the, with the extra dollars only, only those things that we paid for that were public. Now, let me, let me, let me just answer a couple of questions that I get asked. How much do we get to be reimbursed for the stadium? Zero. It's private. No dollar will ever be reimbursed us, not a single one for that stadium. What about the performance venue? No, not a single dollar can ever be reimbursed to us because it's private. The only things that we can be reimbursed for are the public things, the roads and parks that this community will enjoy. By the way, what happens if five years from now, this project is generating a new $20 million a year in revenues that the city doesn't have, and it's taken its general fund from 85 to 105 million dollars? How much do we get then? Zero, because you haven't made $25 million, only after $25 million. So we believe we're funding privately all the costs of this development and have the contingent right to be reimbursed only after the city gets $25 million a year. We think that's easy to understand, and we think when people like the Orange County Register want to take potshots and say that, 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 that this is complicated, that I think they're just trying to throw mud. And I ask you to pause and understand and know how good we intend this deal to be and how we intend it to be just straightforward and understandable. I've covered all this, I think. So now I think we're going to go forward and just talk about, see some pictures. So.
This is a very important point he just got to about the Orange County Register. Now, what we've explained in our reading of the initiative is pretty straightforward, isn't that right? Well, we have a dozen reporters, news anchors, that pretend like they can't understand it. And they report that, oh, who's really paying for it? And I'll tell you why. People thought it was cute when we got the Forum open, and, and they scoffed and said no one would come here, and then, then we became the number-one venue in LA. Then it wasn't so funny no more. All right. Now, we have this smart business proposition that no city has ever been able to achieve. And now all of a sudden, all these smart people, they can't understand it, and they're so confused about what's going to happen. You know why that is? Because they don't want it to happen. They don't want you to sign the initiative. They don't want this here, because you know what happens if this happens? We become an international city. Period. End of story. And so what I'm going to tell you is, I'm not the proponent, I'm the mayor, but I'm telling you, this is something that happens one place in a generation. Now, in one place in a lifetime, one time in a generation, in one place. This is that place, right here, right now. Don't let anyone try to convince you to miss your destiny. That's all I'm telling you. Thank you, guys, I got to go.
So I, I want to, I want to conclude here with a couple of pictures. So the stadium is designed by HKS Sports and Entertainment. They are the best stadium designers that we know of. They are the people that did the Dallas Cowboys stadium, best in class. We've asked them to do a better stadium here than Dallas has, because that's the benchmark. We will be better. There is one unique feature about this that is intended to actually change how stadiums operate in the future. We think we'll be a new example. We asked them to take, if you saw Dallas Cowboys stadiums, it sticks up 300 feet into the air, because they're big, these stadiums are, and it's surrounded by surface parking lots. We said, give us everything on the inside that's every bit as good as Dallas, but sink it down in the ground 100 feet so that it's only 2/3rds as high, so that it makes a better neighbor. And then we said, you know what? And we're not, we're going to let there be parking along, around one-half of it, but the other half, we want it surrounded by retail restaurants and shops, because we want a district. We do not want an island and a parking lot. What this shows you is what you will see when you're walking on the retail main street that's always been part of the plan, and you get to the end and you're looking out over the New Lake and Lake Park, and that is the stadium in the distance. Covered in one of the most beautiful, with one of the most beautiful structures you'll ever see in a stadium, but it's open around the side so that it feels open-air, protected from weather, but open-air, and really sleek, even though that will be one of the, the state-of-the-art stadium in the country. This is a view of that stadium from the other side, so this is from Arroyo Park. Here is the revised plan. Continue to have the retail main street at the corner of Century and Prairie, Lake Park, Arroyo Park, Bluff Park, 10-acre park for the community with swimming, dog parks, soccer fields, the new stadium and performance venue covered by this incredibly beautiful new roof, roof structure. By the way, this is something we include specifically for people in the Renaissance. Is anybody here from the Renaissance? Okay. Then I'm going to, I'm talking to the two of them really quick. When you sign the initiative, when all of your neighbors sign the initiative, one of the things in the initiative, we're doing some things just for our neighbors, this says, you know that crash gate that you always want to get in and out of? You have a permanent easement to go out of that crash gate and access the public roads in the new project so that you can drive through the project and get to Century, Prairie, or Pinque through a second gate. Okay? That's in the plan. This shows that will. By the way, do we have anybody from 10th and 11th Avenues? Well, I don't see any hands. I will just say, our neighbors on the bluff behind us up by Darby Park, we wanted them to know what the project looks like from their land. This is that, that, that little road here, looking back at Bluff Park and, and the stadium. So far, everyone we've shown this to from that neighborhood has been quite happy about how the design tries to be a good neighbor there. This shows you where the stadium is set back from the Renaissance. This is the Renaissance over here, because on all of the borders of the project where we line Renaissance and 10th, 11th, we have a 200-foot-deep zone, so 200 feet, where we don't have anything that's higher than 45 feet, and we're restricting it only to residential, so that it's residential-to-residential good neighbors. And having talked past my allotted time, I will just say, please contact us if you have any questions, and we hope you believe this is a reasonable change to make to the property. We can't stop our construction, so if we want to add this 60 feet and, this 60 acres and harmonize the uses, we need you to support the initiative. Please, please, sign the petitions for the initiative.
Give my hand, don't leave yet, don't leave yet. Where'd you go? There are some other concerns, and we want to solidify. We're going to take a couple of questions, but we need to move on. They need to have a level of assurance that there is local hiring, also for youth, apprenticeships, which is prevailing wages through labor programs, as well as some former training. Can you expand on that also?
I, I want to encourage you to, to actually look at the documents, check the website. Michelle is here. Given time, I don't want to go through all the details. I want to say something very simply. We spent four or five years in front of Councilman Franklin and his associates as this project was being developed. Councilman Franklin, as we were going through this process, cared more about local hire and local jobs than almost any other issue. Every one of the commitments that was included in the original project, 35% participation, the job fairs, the programs to attract youth and apprentices, every one of those programs is included in the initiative and expanded to cover the entire project. So every one of those requirements that was put on us by the council from 2009, every one of those continues on. Only what we've said is, in addition to that, we're going to fund after-school programs, and we are going to actually have the jobs at the stadium have a set aside for Inglewood
We're going to take a couple of questions, but also I just want to emphasize that there are a number of staff representatives of this team regarding this initiative that's outside, and they will be here for the duration of the meeting. All right, I see three questions, gentleman here, lady there, and lady over there.
Yes, my name is Karen Lindsay, I stay in Carlton Square. My question is, this is a great idea, I love it, I signed the initiative, but are our property taxes going up? Our property taxes are sky-high now.
Well, Gerard, you wanted to make one point. So, so the, the short answer there, there is nothing about this development that will do, change anything other than what's on its land. What we think instead is that there are going to be revenues generated here, which are going to be, pay for services that you're going to use. So in the long run, we actually think this is going to change your, that you're, you're going to get more services without your tax rates changing.
But I want to cut the chase. If your, if the property values go up, the county assessor says so will the taxes. Let's be realistic about this.
Not more than 2% a year.
Well, not more than 2%, but it's going to go up because of the value of where you live has gone up, and that's what we've been pushing for.
I, 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 okay, I just wanted to make a really quick point. I just wanted to make a really quick point, going back to the jobs program. Right now, in our current development agreement, and what we're actually doing now onsite, we have a 15% apprentice requirement of local apprentices being hired onto the site, and that's actually now. Our problem is actually trying to get apprentice. So we have programs with South Bay Web and Urban League to get people trained and into the apprentice programs with the various unions, but as we go around doing job fairs, and, and we're doing everywhere from Metro to everywhere, trying to recruit people to get into these programs, we're having a, a little bit of a problem getting young people into the apprentice program. So if there's anybody you know that needs to get into one of these programs, now is the time to do it, because it's not only our project going on, Metro's looking for the same requirement, LA World, Airports is looking for the same requirement, as well as Kaiser Hospital, we will be looking for that very shortly. So 15% local requirement for apprentice, help us find it.
Okay. Young lady back here, and then I want the mic to this gentleman front. And for those that are standing, we're now bringing chairs, so if you want to come back around the outside and then come over here, you can still be seated. Young lady in the back, holding the mic, please speak. Go ahead.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and Councilman Franklin. My name is Margaret Richards-Bowers, I'm a public education advocate. This mayor and his city council have shown considerable interest in a school district and the improvement of the Inglewood Unified School District. And I just heard you mention something about after-school programs, I appreciate that. I'd like you to tell us how this magnificent development would help our school district. Thank you very much.
Sure. So, so for those of you that aren't so, who aren't up to speed on, on school issues here, there's an important thing to note. The Inglewood Unified School District is a separate legal entity than the city of Inglewood, and we only have a contractual relationship with the city of, of Inglewood, not with the Inglewood Unified School District. So let me just say this. We have given the city four acres of land. We have told them we think it would be a wonderful thing to develop on that land some kind of joint program that could benefit schoolchildren, but also be a community enterprise as well. But we don't control that decision. So we've given the city four acres of land, you know, you'll have your local dialogue about how that goes. We also are paying fees to the school district, which will exceed $10 million. And then we are funding, because we don't have a direct relationship, just because that's the nature of it with the school district, we thought we did want to do something for those schoolchildren, so we, that's why we have the after-school program.
And then, and then also with the schools, although...
And we've already funded 4 million. Just real quick, and also, we've already funded $4 million for the school district to make plans relating to our project. That already sits in the school account.
And then also because we're, all this mass development and new residents will be coming to the city, we want to make sure there's a quality education. And I'm proud to announce that the Inglewood Unified School District recently received a grant of $35,000 at Inglewood High School specifically for law and government affairs program that's been added to their curriculum. Next question or comment?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lawrence Hewley, I'm with NOMA, the National Organization of Minority Architects, and my question relates to expanding the, the general concept in terms of the work process, the work in terms of professional services. Engineering and architecture, I think, is critical in terms of not so much the stadium, but the peripheral structures that'll be developed, and that I think that at least it should be, it should be some expansion in terms of, you know, allowing minorities...
Opportunity for, to be in it.
And actually, we're doing that now. Base Architecture was working on our redesign of the Turf Club. They've actually been hired. That's a local minority, African-American-based architecture firm that's associated with the project. We actually have a number of small subcontractors. The first portion of the renovation of this building was conducted by Kurt Tom, Dunsmere, Brenda Curry, which is a local business here, whatever. We have a very robust local and professional business program associated with the project.
Sorry, I didn't say that well. But in addition to that, I think it would also be worthwhile to include the educational portion of that in terms of how you're educating the youth in our community to get them involved in the development on the professional services side.
Yes, and in our development agreement, we have a contractual agreement with the local school district to be able to provide construction training associated with that and to get them into some of our programs. So we will be going out as a professional services to be able to meet with those schoolchildren, get them into the program. We're also sponsoring the job shadow days, also with the Inglewood Unified School District. So we'll be bringing schoolchildren onto the lot and get them exposed to some of the careers outside of even construction as well.
I'd like to say that we'd like to participate and help you with that process.
We understand. We need to move on. Can you carry that mic over to this gentleman here and the young lady over there? And then we need to move on. Two more comments and then we're going to go forward.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Leonard, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware that some of us in Inglewood actually have a view. And we're currently dealing with an issue right now that a building that went up and it blocked part of our view. So now we're concerned with the new buildings that are going up, how it would affect our view there. We're tired of losing and everybody else is gaining.
So that's a major concern. So just piggyback what you mean by view. So some of the topography of the city actually has a hilltop, which gives the view of the ocean view and the airport of the planes landing and taking off. So that's what he's addressing. There's concern raised that with the development of the stadium, the hotel that's going to be built that's going to go up, that it may obstruct their view. So, quick comment about that, and then we need to move on.
Are you on the 11th avenue? We had the picture of the bluff.
I'm on 102nd and 7th Ave.
Okay, we're not close to... Century Heights is down here, right?
Century Heights is Crenshaw and Central Boulevard on the southeast corner.
Okay, southeast corner down here. We're here, they're right here. We're here, the stadium is over here.
Yes.
Okay. So, and this view, so you can see the form from your property?
I sure can, yes, I can. As of right now, I can.
Okay, I'd have to take a look at that. I don't know what to...
So just to let you know, I've already dealt with Century Heights. Our legal department is addressing those issues. Because I also heard the announcement regarding the warehouse shoes that has the tower, that's a legal issue that's pending as we speak. So I need to move on to the last person so we can...
I haven't got an answer.
So the stadium is about the location of the existing grandstand. We'll have to go do a study. Off the top of my head, we've studied from various areas, not from your home, but we'll go look at that and... So we'll go look at it. We'll have to go do a site thing. I don't know from your particular home, but we'll go...
Yeah, you're more than welcome to come. So I just know, is someone going to contact me personally?
No, Leonard, we have to move on. We have to move on. I've already shared with you, you and I have already talked, that our legal counsel has gave me direction that airspace is not a legal requirement by the Inglewood Municipal Code of the City. So we are referencing this development...
That don't make it right, though.
I understand, but what is legal, we have to move on. So let the young lady speak over here so we can go to the next one. That is a legal matter, and we will address that legal matter with you and your representatives. Got it, Leonard? Got it, thank you. Last person, and we need to move on. And I will see you Monday as I promised.
Good morning. I have a concern. I personally am not for your proposal, I'm not against it. But to build a stadium with no guarantee that a team is coming, I'm not for that.
So, I'd answer that in a couple of different ways. First of all, we are...
Let me add something else to that. I'm sorry. Because I see the enthusiasm and everybody's looking at me like, wow. We already have a stadium that's a few blocks from here. I mean, not literally. That's sitting empty, and it has been sitting empty for a very long time. The Coliseum. I know, it's not just happening to do... But I'm saying, to build something of that magnitude...
So let me answer this. Let me put it to you this way. So again, first of all, there's two ways I'm going to address that. There's an economic, and then there's a business opportunity. With respect to the economics, the city has no economic risk whatsoever, even if that stadium sits empty. By the way, if that stadium... No, but I think there's a point that I think will be easy to understand. By the way, if that stadium gets built and no one ever uses it, all that will happen to the city is that they'll get hugely increased property taxes from that stadium. So even if it sat empty, it would be an economic windfall for the city of Inglewood. But that's not what's going to happen. Because... So, how many of you would like to have a new... I'm going to make an analogy here. A new professional office company come in and make Inglewood part of their community? Would you all be for that?
Yeah!
If that company wanted to come here now, there is no Class A office space in Inglewood for them to move into. Right? So if I was, as I am, a commercial developer, I'd have to go build an office building before I could attract an office tenant. If I told you I was going to invest, as we are telling you, hundreds of millions of dollars to build new professional Class A office buildings, and I'm doing it because I believe I'm going to make a lot of money. Because when I build it, those professional companies will come here. You would actually say, praise be. You'd say that's the right thing to do. This is exactly that analogy. The Coliseum, the Rose Bowl, they are... They were wonderful in their time. There will never be a professional team that makes it their permanent home because they aren't to modern standards. The only way... While we don't guarantee what the NFL will do, what we do know is that if they ever are going to put a team here, it will go in a new stadium. And what we are saying is, just like we would build an office building, we're going to build something that will be a Class A, state-of-the-art, new stadium. Not because we think it'll sit empty, but because we think, once it's there, we will lease it.
All right, let's give the Hollywood Park Project a hand, please. Again, if more questions, Leonard, and others, you want to talk outside, there's a team of them that will be more than happy to do that. But in all respect, we have three other presenters that have some key items that other people are here to hear about, particularly when it comes to reference to the residential sound installation program, particularly the square block or the end of the block. But before I do that, there's so many different elected officials, appointed individuals that are here. If you will please stand and be recognized, and then acknowledge who you are, I'd appreciate it. Please stand and be recognized. All the commissioners, board members, school board advisory members. I see the council assistant, Alicia Smith, who's a District 4 resident, but also a District 1. Okay? There's Robert Pullen Miles, the mayor of Longdale. So I just want to stand and be recognized. But there's one individual I want to recognize personally, and I want to reach out to Henry Brown. Henry Brown is our District 4 representative and the chairman of the Martin Luther King Committee. Through his leadership, he was instrumental to work with the city, and we had the best Martin Luther King events we've ever had in the entire city. We, when we had the symbolic march and came to the Madison Square Gardens Forum, we had thousands and thousands of people that came to a free concert. And many of them were from Los Angeles because they were overwhelmed that it's one thing to do a march, but there's no end of the destination. What are you going to do when you finish? And this was the top of the line. So I want to reach out to Brother Henry Brown, who's also the newly appointed on the Inglewood Unified School District Advisory Board. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you, all the electeds. Pat Sanders, all of you, thank you so much. So I need to move on because we're really running short of time. I want to reach out to the residential sound installation program because many of you here that have square block where the Los Angeles World Airport and the Federal Aviation has said, "We identify there's a flight path." And if those homes that fall within the flight path that meets the requirements of FAA and LALA standards, then in turn, we will help soundproof your homes. But there's many of them in this imaginary line in the sky that says, "You're outside that corridor, and so no funding will be made available." Well, I'm now here to address that issue that has been fermenting for years. And I want to stress, for years. But we have some good news, and please help me recognize Ms. Betty Griffith, our residential sound installation program manager from the city of Inglewood. Betty?
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to make this a little short because I'd like to spend the balance of my time addressing questions. And I do have... I brought staff with me today so that on the spot, I could sign up residents that are in the squared-off positions. So I'd like to do that. I'll give you a little backdrop on where we are. But before I go forward, I want to thank the mayor and the council because this has come at no easy task to get this $44.3 million. And again, that is a feat that has never been accomplished by any city in the nation. And for LA Inglewood to get this is just outstanding. But it came with the help of strong leadership from our mayor and the council. So we'd give the mayor and the council for strong leadership for helping closing this deal. Let's give them a hand. And I'd like to thank the staff, and I do have staff here. So, and these are inspectors that will be going to your home if you have gotten a letter from me saying, "Are you interested in being in our program?" And if you receive that letter and send it back, you will be able to apply for our services. Could staff just stand up so I could recognize? I mean, they're on the clock, so... These are our inspectors. They're here today, on the spot. We will go to your home. There's one in the back. I got staff out, I think it's about three or four people out at the table. I have four or five in here. They will go out to your home today and look at your home to see whether or not you qualify. All you need to do is make an appointment at the desk as you're leaving. They're here on the clock to 4:00. So if you want to leave here, have them come to your home between now and 4:00. They're available. Now, I say that, and the reason I... Thank you very much. The reason we're offering this service today, and we will continue to offer this type of service because this money comes without any... There's a lot of work that has to be done. We're under a very, very tight time constraint to spend this $44 million. And if we don't spend it, it goes back. But I only have to August to spend the money. That means from now until August, I have to get all the homeowners, and there's over 869 homeowners, come in, sign up, get their house inspected, get the consultants to come out to do the floor plans, get the plans back to the city, get them approved by the city. Have the homes... I have to advertise to the community. I have to do a pre-bid. I have to do a bid for the contractors. Then they have to come out to your home, measure your home all over again so they can order the products. Then they'll come back and do your home. They will do the construction work. That's about 18 months' worth of work that's being accelerated down to like four to five months. So what I'm going to need from you as a homeowner, I need you to assist me. How many of you have been waiting for the squared-off block? Just a show of hands. How many of you have had your home done? How many of you are expecting to have your home done? And are these the same... Are you squared-off that are expecting? Okay, all right. Are there anyone in here that is not in the squared-off that has not had their home done? Okay, did you get a letter from me saying that you're interested in being on the list for squared-off properties? Okay. Okay, all right. So we'll talk about that, but let me give you some stats. As the mayor, or I think it was the mayor and Councilman Franklin, who stated that the only way that we could do squared-off properties because you're not really in the contour that they have established, and since we didn't write the rules and we don't pay the bills, they established the rules, we just follow the rules. So the only way that the squared-off block, and these are properties that... Here we go, right here. This is the contour. Can everybody see these lines? Okay. You see there's a last black line here? This is up above that, this is the contour. These properties here are below the line. You did not qualify. So through our stipulated settlement agreement, if we finished everything up in here that were qualified and wanted to participate, once we finished that and we had funding available, we could go and offer this to all these that's in the blue. That's... 100, between, okay. 100, it's below 104th down to 108th. Some of these are right at 108th, and I would say, what's the other cross street? On the north side. Between Crenshaw and Van Ness. So, and I'll have this map out at the back, too. So you can come in. If you want to know your exact address, I brought everybody's exact address with me. Okay, so if you want to know the exact, just see me after the meeting. I brought everybody's name. Everybody's address is with me. So you can ask me, "Do I qualify?" Okay. So... We fought very hard for our community. We fought very, very hard because they did not feel that we could spend this money in the timeframe that we have left. So I'm going to really need your cooperation. If you're on this list that I have and you got a letter from me stating that you are interested in being included in the squared-off block program, then when we call you, you need to be available. You need to be available because we're moving on a very fast clip. And if I can't get you in, the one thing I will not do is have us go out to your home, bring a designer to pay them to do floor plans, only to find out that there is a problem in your home. Because I'm not going to spend money that we can't go forward. Do you understand what I'm saying? So I can't pay a designer to come out and do all this work. That's just throwing money away because I'm not going to get to construction. And if I can't get to construction to do your home, that's wasted money. I could have taken that money and did a home that is eligible. Okay, so if you know you have a condition at your home that's not permitted, or you need to clean it up on some kind of... Something there, if you put a division in your home, if you added a unit to your house, if you've done something that you have not gotten a permit from the city, it could stop you from getting the work done. Anything that is a health and safety issue at your home, we're not going to do your home. I can just be very flat, honest with you. We can't do a home that has some health and safety issues. So if you know already, get it fixed because we don't have time to wait. We have to move this. We have to move this, okay? I can't stress that enough. So that $44 million comes with a price. I'm really hoping that we can get to everybody that has qualified, that now is qualified to get their home done, but I'm going to need your help. We called people that we knew were coming to this meeting. They had appointments today. I got a notary out there. We're taking applications. We're doing your, we're notarizing your signatures. We got staff that's going to go out and do your home to see if you have a condition that would prohibit you from moving forward in our program. So I'm doing everything we possibly can. We've got staff. We've talked to the contractors. We've got everything in place. We got the money now. Now I need you to be very cooperative, and when we come out or we call you, be available. That's all I'm asking, is be available. Here, all the stuff we've heard today, all the improvements with the city is great, but how about just improving the quality of life in your own home? How about that would be great if you can just, don't have to turn the TV down or turn it up and all of that because you can't because the planes are flying over. So this is the only way that this group of residents can get our program. This is the only way. You're not in the contour. So this is the only way, and when August 31st hit, if your home has not been done, it will not be done. There is no other provision. You're not in the contour. So we went through great pains, and like I said, the mayor and council assisted in us getting this money for you. So I need you to do the same thing that they've done. Be a leader. Tell your neighbors, "We got the money now." And I know a lot of you have been waiting for over 10 years for this to happen. So it's now happening, okay? So now that it's happening, let's make it work. So I'm going to, I'm going to stop. I mean, it's a whole lot I can tell you. We've done 1,000 units last year. The mayor raised the bar. I mean, the leadership we have has raised the bar. We stepped up to that. We cleaned up our, I think the mayor mentioned we had some years where we didn't get money. And that was because our record-keeping and our reporting wasn't what they wanted. We've changed that. We've cleaned it up, and now we're moving forward. We've got to do it at a fast clip. And the reason August 31st is important, FAA has changed their guidelines. Starting September 1st, even though you live in the contour today, under these guidelines, if you're in the contour, you're eligible. Starting September 1st, if you're in the, if you're in the contour, we have to come out and test your home first to see if you're eligible to participate in the program. Many of you will not be eligible. So that's why we're racing against the clock to get you in. And even if I don't get you in now, some of the residents will still qualify, but you're not in the contour. So the first thing, September 1st, you have to be in the contour to be eligible, to be tested. You're not in the contour, okay? So this is the only time you have the opportunity to participate. And we're talking about taxes and all that. This program, even though we're going to be doing $30,000 to $40,000 worth of work in your home, it's an improvement to your home. Your taxes will not go up because of the improvements that we're doing. So that's a plus. Okay, I'll take some questions, and then I'll tell you we're out in the audience, we're out in the foyer. You can come out and get.
Hi, good morning. Okay, I send in, I turned in my application, not the application, the letter, and I've been calling like almost every two weeks to find out about the status of, of, what is next, and I haven't received any, any information. Okay, thank you.
I sent the letter of interest out as a way to get ahead of the game. We did not know we were going to get the approval. We got the approval of the money on January 15th. So the day is the 23rd, so it's only been like a week. So that's why you didn't get a solid answer because we couldn't say yes because we didn't know yes.
Hello, for those of us who have received the letter, have had the first inspection, are we, and have not heard from anyone, does that mean we're automatically eligible? We still need to see you today.
You need to go out to the front, make, you've had your survey?
Yes.
And you've turned it in. Now you can come in and apply and get your notary, get your signature notarized as being the legal owner of the property. Then you're in the program.
Okay, and those of us who are not here that have received the letter, what should they do? Go to the city?
They, they need to come to the city immediately. I need everybody, I need, I need the room filled up like this immediately at the office. I only have to February 20th to get everybody in.
Yes, yes, at this moment, I'm kind of been in Inglewood for quite a while, and I've been waiting on that, too, to get my house insulated. Is any way possible that I can get the message to the ones that's old and can't get here? I speak for a lot of them, too. And is there a way you can sign me up? I can get a petition to take to them and have them to sign in? Would you okay it that way?
No, actually, if you just have them call, if they can't come out to the, to the city, I will have someone go to their home and sign them up.
My question is twofold. The first is health and safety versus cosmetic, cosmetics in terms of whether or not you're able to put in the windows. I was told that because I had carpet in my garage, which is not going to be, the windows would not be replaced, that I didn't qualify. The second is an outdoor structure, which is a pergola. They wanted to know whether or not the pergola had a permit or not. Now, these two things don't affect, if you will, the interior of the home, so I'm wondering how you make the distinction between what is health and safety and what is just a cosmetic issue. The second part of that is, is that when the individual came out, he attempted at every point to dissuade me from going with the windows. Number one, the quality of my windows is, they were very expensive. Total windows in the house were over $30,000. So he indicated that, "Well, we can't replace these windows with like windows." My question is, throughout all these years, we've been told that you get like for like. The doors, he couldn't replace. The windows, he couldn't replace. And because it doesn't make sense economically for me to replace those windows and go with a cheaper window, I'm unable to get, if you will, any insulation whatsoever. So can you address those two points?
Because I don't know the real particulars on, on yours, I would ask you to come into the office and talk to me. But as far as the garages go, I will speak to that. And Inglewood does not give permits for us to do anything other than have cars in your garage. So they will never give you a permit to change your garage from being a garage. Inglewood is a small city, so we need all the parking that we can have. So the point is that if we've converted a garage to living space, then it's no longer garage, so that car is not parked on the street, and we have a lot of problems with parking on the street. So that's one thing. The other thing, I don't know the particulars about your structure of your house and your windows and doors, but I would welcome the opportunity and be happy to discuss it with you in the office.
Hi. My name is Mrs. Emma Lathrin. We had the first inspection to come out, and everything passed without, we had to put smoke alarms in the bedroom. Now, are we, we haven't heard from you guys, so you're saying that we need to talk to you today?
Yes, yes. You haven't heard from us because we just got the funding approved on the 15th of January. That letter was sent out so that we can get the people, get a head start, if you will, in, in, in view of the fact, if we got the funding, we would already have a list. And now we have the list. All you need to do is go out front. Your name is out there, and you can sign up today.
Hi, thank you. I just want to be clear. If we are just south of this blue area, so we are south of 108th, if there is any money left, we still will not be eligible. I just want to be clear.
You are not eligible. I'm sorry to have to tell you that, but you are not eligible.
Okay, thank you.
So that was, Inglewood Knowles is not eligible. Century Heights, and a portion of it, is eligible. And many of the Lock Haven area is eligible for District 4. So you see, there's a lot of interest going on, but there's a sunset. So those that have any questions or concerns regarding the Residential Sound Insulation Program, there's a team outside ready to address those issues. Please don't leave today. And particularly, there's several of you that were right at the boundary lines of FAA law was flight path, the noises corridor first, that now have an opportunity. Do not leave today without signing those documents so that way we can expedite you getting into a bid package that the council can adopt for construction to begin at your home. Now, I want to move on. I have two more presentors. I want to reach out to the individuals that have identified that we as a city want to make sure that your waste hauling is done properly, that you actually have those three-colored bins, 90-gallon bins in front of your house, the, the black one, the blue one, and the green one. And also special bulk pickup. But also, there's other programs that's available for the city residents. In fact, some cases, several of the residents have been very successful in participating in the program and getting one year free of waste hauling services. Please help me recognize Ms. Dawn Harris, the Municipal Service Manager of Republic Services. Give it up, give it up!
Good morning, afternoon. Thank you for waiting for me. I'll be really quick about this. One of the things that we wanted to bring to your attention again, bring to your attention again, is the Recycle Rewards program. And the Recycle Rewards program is open to anyone. The area of town that has the most recyclables by weight can win a prize for their neighborhood. Last year, Councilman Franklin's neighborhood in his area was able to recycle the most, and they were able to win $5,000 that went to improving the schools in his district. So we encourage everyone to sign up. All you have to do is call. We'll put your name on the list. Once you call, please make sure that you put your blue recycling container out every week. And then we'll take care of the rest by weighing it, and we'll do the mapping and see where the most recycling comes from, and then we'll be able to give the $5,000 prize to the winning neighborhood. I want to make you aware of our phone numbers, just in case you want to call in today, tomorrow, anytime, with any questions about any type of service or program. We have a customer service office at 800-299-4898. And then we also have a local office that is located right across the street from City Hall. It's at 210 South La Brea, Suite 200, 201, Suite 201, and 210. That would be our lovely and talented Mari Morales Rodriguez, Office Manager. And, and she's awesome. She's there to help you out Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, closed for lunch, 12 to 1. And you can reach her at 310-436-7341. That's 310-436-7341. She can help you with any information that you need. What I wanted to share with you today, something important that you don't realize is that you should not put your household batteries into the trash or the recycling containers. It doesn't seem like a big deal. We've had a couple of issues lately. They just don't belong in the landfill. So we don't want to put them in the truck to begin with. We prefer that you would recycle them. And the way you can do that is simply put them in a baggie like this, Ziploc bag, and set it on top of your blue recycle container. We have the drivers on alert, so they'll be looking for this kind of thing. What we'll do is we bring them all back. Once we get a good enough amount, we'll take them to the recycler. They dismantle these, take them all apart, and recycle the, the good stuff, and then the rest, they safely dispose of. So please make sure, regardless of this, no car batteries, but household batteries that you use. Right? We don't need those. But household batteries, just put them in a Ziploc bag and throw them right on top of your blue recycle container. We'll be happy to take those for you. And then, the last thing that I wanted to talk to you about today very quickly is, for sharps and landsets and those kind of items that are, should not belong in the trash container, we have a free program where if you call into the office, we will send you a mail-back kit. And what happens is, we send you one of these that you can dispose of your needles and other sharp items in here. Then you can close it back up. We have the self-addressed stamped box. Slide it back in, put it out for the mailman, and he'll take that. We will be able to have these things taken care of, recycled, and properly disposed of. We have this at no charge to Inglewood residents only. We've also had other cities that are kind of jealous of this. We want to make sure when you call in, tell them that you are an Inglewood resident, and we'll make sure that we get this sent out to you by mail. Once you're finished, you can call in and get another one. We only send them out one at a time. Just put them right in the mail, free. Inglewood residents only, okay? Any questions at all?
Any question by the Republic? Wow, you got it way clean.
I know.
Give it up for her, please.
Thank you.
Okay, our last presenter. I want to make sure that we've, we've had a number of issues of discussions regarding helping the city advance in a number of areas of development. We had another issues that we talked about, quality of life, whether it's residential sound insulation, or we actually talk about picking up waste and bulk pickup, et cetera. Now I want to talk about another one, and that is energy efficiency rebate programs and other economic ways that how you can improve your home. So please help me welcome from the South Bay Environmental Service Center, Energy Upgrade California Rebate Programs, Grace Farwell Grandeur, Environmental Service Analyst. Please give it up.
So I come with props, big props. Well, I just, I, I'm excited to be here, and, and I'm actually here just to talk a little bit about Energy Upgrade California. And actually, to read my notes, I have to take my glasses off. So to start off, the Council of Governments has an Environmental Services Center, and we do partner with Edison and the Gas Company, as well as West Basin Municipal Water District, and Sanitation Districts of LA County, Metro. And I think, I think I got the list. So one of the things that's really exciting is we were recently awarded a, all right, back up one more. I'm not quite there yet. We were recently awarded as a community organization ambassador to be out there promoting Energy Upgrade California. And I've been here in the past to talk about Energy Upgrade California. And that program, really, at that time, we were looking at trying to get residents to do upgrades to their home and get some rebates back from the utility companies. Well, now Energy Upgrade California is more of an umbrella term under which there are a number of different programs. So I just want to quickly run through this and then get to some of the water issues. So the Energy Upgrade California, it's really a statewide initiative that's looking at really helping Californians to meet their energy goals. And part of this is to help California meet its strategic plan. And something that I think is really interesting is that there are four cornerstone strategies in order for California to meet their strategic plan. And number one is all-new residential construction will be zero net energy by 2020. That's in five more years. All-new commercial construction will be zero net energy by 2030. And then heating, ventilating, and air conditioning industry will be reshaped to deliver maximum-performance HVAC systems. And then all-eligible, low-income customers will have the opportunity to participate in the low-income energy efficiency program and will be provided all cost-effective energy efficiency measures in their residences by 2020. So those are really the four cornerstone strategies that make up the, the energy efficiency statewide strategy. So really, when we look at Energy Upgrade California, it's now, it's a program to really get out and market and to get people to, to drive people to the website, to really try to put together, you know, an energy action plan, and there's all kinds of great helpful hints. And so we have, a lot of it is through the, the Home Upgrades Program. There's direct communication or drive commuter, yeah, drive consumers to the website, provide easy manage, easy step, easy-to-follow steps to manage strategies or energy and water use, increase awareness of the program, and then there are low-cost and no-cost items as well. So really, it's, I spent probably two hours on the website yesterday just familiarizing myself with all the great information and everything that's out there. So a little background on Energy Upgrade California. This program, next slide, please, is, it's sponsored by the California Public Utilities Commission, as well as the California Energy Commission. And then the management, the administration of it, is the Center for Sustainable Energy, which is a statewide program, and then a PR firm that's in Sacramento. And then all the stakeholders are the investor-owned utilities. And so if you go to the next slide, it shows that statewide, if you were here in Inglewood, and so that's Edison and the Gas Company, but if you have family, or if you were to move to San Diego, San Diego Gas and Electric is also participating in this program, as well as Pacific Gas and Electric customers in Northern California. Next slide, please. So how many of you have seen Bear? He's the biggest fan of Energy Upgrade California. There are some TV spots, or maybe you've heard him on the radio. There are some TV spots, or maybe you've heard him on the radio, talking about some of the different energy efficiency programs? Nobody? Okay, okay, good. Well, from now on, because I've just mentioned it, now you're going to get in your car, and you're going to hear a radio spot on the, in your car, and now you're going to pay attention to it. But, but anyway, Bear is out and around and at different events and really trying to promote Golden California, or keeping California golden. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we were just awarded to be a community outreach ambassador, and currently we are one of 37, and we are working with another agency, the Environmental Charter Schools, in our area to promote Energy Upgrade California. Next slide, please. And so there's a big media, social media out, you kind of push out, and then through Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. So hopefully you'll see a lot of different hashtags and a lot of different information about Energy Upgrade California. Next slide. So this is just an example of some of the energy management tips that can be found on the website. So lots of great tips. Next slide. And then Home Upgrade. This is the program that, in the past, I've come and talked with you about, you know, when you work with a contractor who's been vetted by Edison and the Gas Company to do some of these upgrades. So there are, right now, up to $6,500 worth of rebates in, by doing some of these energy efficiency projects. Next slide, please. So again, just with the Home Upgrade, they're really looking at your ceiling, your building envelope. So you're doing the basic measures of your home, so attic insulation, duct sealing, sealing all the cracks in your home. And then there are also advanced measures. So that could be attic, or, excuse me, wall insulation, as well as looking at maybe some of the equipment that's involved. Next slide. And so then, just really, Energy Upgrade California is all about rebates and incentives, and they have them for appliances, pool pumps, HVAC systems. So this is just kind of an example of some of the rebates that are available. Next slide. And then this slide is just, just gives you some ideas of how you can save money in putting together your energy plan. Next slide. And right now, there's a campaign going on with Energy Upgrade California to play your part to keep California, or to keep it to stay golden. And so there's a sweepstakes. So you go on to the website, energyupgradeca.org, and you put together an action plan, and you can enter into the sweepstakes to potentially win some energy-saving devices. Like there's a furnace, I believe, and a dishwasher, refrigerator, so different, different energy-efficient items. So does anyone have any questions about this program right now?
For those of us who aren't lucky enough to be in the Contour, you know, the windows and the way to retrofit the city, you know, there's some of us that don't live in the chosen corridor. Oh, so the ones of, of us who don't live in the chosen corridor, do you guys do the window installations?
Windows can be part of Energy Upgrade California, so you would work with a contractor to find out what other measures, but yes, windows can be part of, and you can get a rebate back for.
Okay, and do you have a senior program? Because a lot of us are, you know, the golden age.
Right now, with Energy Upgrade California, there is not, but there are other programs for which you may qualify, because there are income-qualified ones. There's also a pilot project that's called the Middle Income Direct Install Program, and so I have information about that out at my table, so I'm happy to talk with you after this meeting.
Okay, and then as far as you know with the window upgrades, do we as homeowners have to pull permits, or does the company that you're going to refer to us pull permits?
The contractor would pull the permits.
And you're going to refer to us contractors?
There's a list of, you can find participating contractors on the energyupgradeca.org website, because what you can do, it's a statewide website, but then you can plug in your zip code, and then you'll find all the information that's relevant to your area.
Last question, is there a local number for us to call rather than getting into an 800 number?
No, there is not, but you can always call me, and my number is 310, it's actually on the yellow pen.
Okay.
371-7222. That's the South Bay Environmental Services Center.
Thank you.
And we're happy to give more information about that.
Yeah, so just get a yellow pin outside. The number's right on, get the yellow pin.
And also, if you picked up information in your, in the packet when you came in, there was a, a packet of information, and it has our number on there. So now I'd like to actually move on to, oh, and one last thing. We did put at everybody's table a quick little survey about Energy Upgrade California, and by completing this survey, we can find out what other programs may be of interest to you that we can put in under Energy Upgrade California. Okay. Oh, okay, I have one minute to quickly go through this monstrosity. So as I mentioned earlier, West Basin Municipal Water District is one of our partners, and so as such, West Basin has a number of different conservation, water conservation programs that are going on. The most exciting one right now for 2015 is a free rain barrel. So last year, the city of Inglewood, as well as Golden State, in, in their water bills, sent information to Inglewood residents about some of the different conservation programs. So a number of you called last year to get on our interest list for the rain barrel. Well, we now know that it's coming up. We're going to have an event in Inglewood in March. So if you are not already on our list, or if you have not, or if you don't, don't, aren't sure that you called earlier, you can give us a call to make sure that you're on our interest list. And what that means is, as soon as we have the date of the event, we will either send out information via email, or if you don't have email, we will call you to let you know about the event. And so right now, this is a 55-gallon rain barrel. It's a repurposed food container, so it's 40 inches high by 24 inches in diameter. And you can get either one or two. It's going to be depending on how many people call in to get these rain barrels. But it's, it's just a great thing to be able to capture the rain. It also comes with a flexible hose that you can attach to your downspout. And then just real quickly, to get on that, there is a rain barrel flyer in the packet, but to get on to that interest list, the phone number you need to call is 310-371-4633. And that's our dedicated West Basin line to find out about any of the, any of the programs, the water conservation programs that are offered through West Basin. So, and I guess that's it. But there are other, there are other flyers that were available in your packet.
All right, so we ran out of time, so we, so those that have questions regarding the South Bay Environmental Service Center, she'll be right outside. Did everyone enjoy themselves? Did you get a knowledge, enough of good information? Would you share the information? The key for me having town hall meetings is making sure that I bring the information that you've asked for, and that you find of value that you will share, not only with your family, but your neighbors and friends as well. So on that happy note, I want to thank everyone for coming. Welcome to our 2015 first town hall meeting. Looking forward for our next one. God bless you all, have a safe trip on. Thank you. Sorry about that.